We would call the Yukon City Council meeting for October the sixteenth, two thousand and twelve to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Ron Rasmussen and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Father, we just paused to step in your presence here for a moment. It reminds us who we are. In one sense, nothing compared to you; in another sense, your creation, created in your image. We're amazed at that, that you give us that privilege. So, we need to stand before you like this, just for a few moments, Lord, because we don't want to think we're more important than we are, and we don't want to think that we're less, or that we're lacking confidence or insecurity, because you are with us. And we know, Father, that you want your will done as much as possible down here on earth like it is there in heaven. So, help bring that about, Lord, through every individual that's here tonight, especially through our council. In Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Albert Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
This time we have a presentation to the Head Start program. If someone will meet me down front. Our question says, whereas Head Start is a comprehensive, family-oriented child development program for low-income families, and whereas since the establishment of the Head Start program on May the eighteenth, nineteen sixty-five, Head Start has provided comprehensive health, education, nutrition, and social services to more than eight million preschool children and their families, and whereas major research funding documents the program's lasting positive effect on children, and whereas October has been designated as the Head Start Awareness Month, and Yukon's Head Start will join more than thirty-two thousand Head Start classrooms across the country in celebrating the accomplishment of the Head Start program, and whereas the support of this community has been made possible by the local Head Start program. Now therefore, I, John Alberts, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby declare the month of October two thousand and twelve to be Head Start Month. Congratulations, and tell us who you are and a little explanation about the program, please.
My name is Imalene Polmeyer. I'm one of the teachers at the Yukon Head Start program. This is one of my parents, Bailey, and her little boy, Jesse. They are in our Head Start program this year. We serve families in the Yukon area. This year, we have, well, we had three classrooms in Yukon, and then we had to split up. We lost our building at nine fifty Poplar, so we had to split up. There's two of us left in Yukon. One center went to Mustang. Through the generosity of Gwen Messicap at Peanut Butter and Jelly Day Care, one of our classrooms got to move out there. And then my classroom is at Bright Beginnings. It's Cassie and Charles who own that, so I'm there. And through your generosity, we're able to stay here in Yukon. We have lots of support from people, and we depend upon your support. It's a program for families that are lower income. We take their children. We teach. We have a curriculum that we use. We teach them. It started out in nineteen sixty-five as a socially-emotional program for children. It was getting kids ready to go in the public school. But over the years, we've kind of evolved into, we have all kinds of, we have literacy, we teach language, we teach math, cognitive, all those areas to get the children ready for public school. We love the program. I've been there nineteen years. It's a wonderful program. I think every child in of three, four, and five, we take three-year-olds, and I think all children should be able to have Head Start. It's a shame that a lot of the funding is going to, is disappearing. We don't near get the funding that we used to, and it's really sad, because some of our programs have had to either disappear, or we just don't, we just don't have enough money to go around. But Yukon has always been very generous. A lot of the churches, if I call and if I need help for my families, a lot of the churches provide that help, and it's wonderful. It's a great program. If you ever want to stop by and see us, please do.
Thank you so much for all that you do, and that's just another reason why our community's so wonderful. Young man, what's your name?
Jesse.
Jesse? Do you want to talk?
He's not much of a talker, but he is smart.
He has some cute dimples. Jesse, thank you for coming. We appreciate it, and thank you so much for all your service and all those years. Thank you, ma'am. The next part of the meeting is the visitor section of the meeting. That's the opportunity for someone to address the council about a non-agenda item. If anyone's here that would like to address the council, if they would come forward at this time to the podium and state their name and their address, please. Any visitors? Visitors this evening? If not, at this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. One A, the YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agendas of the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October the second, two thousand and twelve; B, the payment of material claims in the amount of one hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents; and C, the restatement of the fiscal year two thousand and eleven independent auditor's report. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yes.
Gerba?
McCarron?
Yes.
Yes.
Opitz?
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
McCarron?
The next item is three A, and that's consider, consider and approve resolution number YMA
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
two thousand and twelve dash five, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Yukon Municipal
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Authority two thousand and twelve revenue note in the aggregate principal amount not Yes. The next item is three A, and that's consider, consider and approve resolution number YMA to exceed two million dollars, waiving competitive bidding, and authorizing said revenue note two thousand and twelve dash five, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Yukon Municipal to be sold at a price less than par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided Authority two thousand and twelve revenue note in the aggregate principal amount not by Title sixty Oklahoma Statute one seventy-six, authorizing and approving documents, procedures, to exceed two million dollars, waiving competitive bidding, and authorizing said revenue note to be sold at a price less than par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided and payments related to the issuance of the revenue note, designating the revenue note by Title sixty Oklahoma Statute one seventy-six, authorizing and approving documents, procedures, as qualified tax-exempt obligations and continued in, as contained, excuse me, in the Internal and payments related to the issuance of the revenue note, designating the revenue note Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, providing that the trust and interest shall be subject as qualified tax-exempt obligations and continued in, as contained, excuse me, in the Internal to the provisions of the revenue note ratifying a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Municipal Authority, and agreeing that Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, providing that the trust and interest shall be subject the terms of the lease shall extend so long as the revenue note remains outstanding and to the provisions of the revenue note ratifying a lease agreement and operation and maintenance unpaid. contract between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Municipal Authority, and agreeing that Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? the terms of the lease shall extend so long as the revenue note remains outstanding and Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
unpaid.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Alberts?
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Second.
Opitz?
Discussion?
Yes.
Discussion?
McCarron?
Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Smith?
At this time, we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council.
Yes.
The first item of business is the consent docket.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
This item is placed on the agendas of the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent, can Yes. designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October the second, two thousand and twelve; B, the payments of material claims in the amount of seven hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents; C, designating the items on the attached list of technology, on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, the restatement of the fiscal year two thousand and eleven independent auditor's report; and E, setting the date of the next regular council meeting for November the sixth, two thousand and twelve, seven p.m., in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is two, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Anything this evening?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is three, and that's consider accepting the new Yukon Fire Station project and placing the maintenance bond into effect as recommended by Triad Design Group.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Is this the, is this the final, on that, the final payment and everything to?
Final payment of the reserve.
For that, okay.
The amounts you see is actually the five percent reserve that was held back out of every payment, and that's what we're paying.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Smith?
I just want to say that I'm so proud and thankful for the citizens of Yukon to have stood behind this from the time we voted it in. Tonight, we have this beautiful, beautiful, state-of-the-art facility for our fire department, and I'm just, I'm just proud as anything that we were able to be a part of it.
It's wonderful. Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. The next item is four, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for the conversion of eight Whelan Storm sirens to solar power from the Capital Improvement Fund as recommended by the Emergency Manager Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Number five is consider and approve ordinance number one-two-eight-two, and ordinance amending ordinance number six-five-seven, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for part of Block B, Yukon Hills Edition, second section of Yukon Canadian County, Oklahoma, Bass Avenue, Cornwell Drive, be changed from C-four, planned shopping center district to C-three restricted commercial district, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item of business is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agendas of the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of October the second, two thousand and twelve; B, the payments of material claims in the amount of seven hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents; C, designating the items on the attached list of technology, on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D, the restatement of the fiscal year two thousand and eleven independent auditor's report; and E, setting the date of the next regular council meeting for November the sixth, two thousand and twelve, seven p.m., in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is two, and that's the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Anything this evening?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is three, and that's consider accepting the new Yukon Fire Station project and placing the maintenance bond into effect as recommended by Triad Design Group.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Is this the, is this the final, on that, the final payment and everything to?
Final payment of the reserve.
For that, okay.
The amounts you see is actually the five percent reserve that was held back out of every payment, and that's what we're paying.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Smith?
I just want to say that I'm so proud and thankful for the citizens of Yukon to have stood behind this from the time we voted it in. Tonight, we have this beautiful, beautiful, state-of-the-art facility for our fire department, and I'm just, I'm just proud as anything that we were able to be a part of it.
It's wonderful. Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
The next item is four, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of thirty-nine
thousand, two hundred dollars for the conversion of eight Whelan Storm sirens to solar power from the Capital Improvement Fund as recommended by the Emergency Manager Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Number five is consider and approve ordinance number one-two-eight-two, and ordinance amending ordinance number six-five-seven, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for part of Block B, Yukon Hills Edition, second section of Yukon Canadian County, Oklahoma, Bass Avenue, Cornwell Drive, be changed from C-four, planned shopping center district to C-three restricted commercial district, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just got one quick question. I was curious what the stipulations are of C-four versus C-three are.
Mitchell, specifically, because there are numerous restrictions.
It seems like C-three sounds like it's more restrictive.
Well, it kind of depends. The C-four is actually meant for shopping centers, and we're pulling this out into a C-three zone to allow the use that's being proposed. The C-four did not allow the parcel to be divided into that small of a parcel, so we had to downzone it, or zone it to C-three, because C-four shopping centers require a lot, larger lot area.
Right, it's got to be a comprehensive plan.
Yes, yes, like the shopping center to the south.
Right.
You know, it's a long strip center, and this allows for more, for a smaller parcel for it to be sold off.
Okay.
Is it, Mitchell, if you don't mind, is it more of a pad site?
Yes, it's been turned into a pad site, yes.
All right, and all we're talking about this evening is changing the zoning for the pad site?
That is correct.
The remaining part of that property is still going to be?
C-four, because it's going to stay part of the shopping center, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to ask this question out of ignorance, okay? If we approve this to be a C-three, retail for this small area, and if I understand it correctly, it's, it's the frontage of that lot.
That's correct.
So we have to count on, in the future, for the rest of that property to be developed, it still has to fall under the C-four retail development.
The what's not being rezoned to C-four would apply for that part, yes.
Again, out of ignorance, if, if we do approve this frontage, that's fantastic for the bank site, but does that lessen the likelihood of the development of the property behind it, the remaining part of that parcel?
Probably the best way to think about this is the target site. You have out parcels. This would be a frontage for an out parcel.
Right.
Hopefully, you know, there'd be an end user that'd use the rest of that behind the center, or that out parcel. So it'd be a similar, you know, like we've got Freddy's, and you've got Chick-fil-A, and you've got Red crib, they're out parcels in front of the bigger development.
But as I see this, and maybe I'm wrong in seeing it this way, but as I see this, we're developing the front-sub area of the property.
That's correct.
Prior to the primary area of the property.
Sometimes that happens, but also Bass, the half-street, they're going to pave the other half to allow access on a public street to the back parcel. So we're going to have a public street accessing the back parcel, as well as they can come through the shopping center, and it's actually a cross-access agreement being exercised among the shopping center and this out parcel if it closes.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Mitchell.
How far back will that street go, Mitchell?
It's going to go back to the end of the park that's been a lot split off, which is past the drive that enters into the Arvest development, which is basically past Taco Bell, if you look, that drive in there.
Yeah, it, right now, it just goes down, and half of it sort of turns into the, and the other half is just potholes.
And that's one of the things that we're doing with this, too, requiring them to do that half-street paving, because we have not had the ability to maintain that.
Well, my question then is, also becomes, what about the other half that isn't done, that only goes down to the Arvest turnoff?
Well, eventually, if it's developed, then that street would be extended on into the property.
But it's not part of this.
There will be a half-street added to it, up to that back drive, yes. It doesn't go all the way back to?
The back of the harvest buildings that are there, does it go all the way to the back of that, or does it stop at the?
You're stopping at the back of the property, right? Yeah, it's going to start, stop about where that drive is, and then we'll have them put a barricade in there, so we don't get access back into the back property. It's, I don't know what you have. I think you have kind of an oversight plan. That kind of shows that. And if you look at that, that street would go to the east, and then you'll be able to enter into the shopping center, which is Arvest Plaza, or you'll be able to enter into this development and go across into the shopping center, if I remember right. At that point, where that street dead ends, or where it stops, we're going to require them to put a barricade in there, so they don't go on into that property.
Well, but how far, I mean, how far is this? I couldn't tell from the diagram as it was shown when I looked at it, exactly.
Well, it looks like it might just go far enough so you can get behind the, behind the building, basically, the end of the lot.
Yes.
And this, and this actually shows that, though, is going back quite a bit past, and is that both lanes are going to go quite a bit past the, and the extension of Bass, it shows both sides of that actually extending past the, the entryway into the harvest property.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not quite a bit past, but it's going past, yes.
Yeah, and that would probably be the width of those buildings down to whatever this property line is here in the back. So both of those, both sides of that, then, and then they'll have a barricade.
There would be a barricade to prevent people from entering into the undeveloped portion.
But it actually should be two lanes, that's what we're saying.
There will be two lanes. They're going to do the other half of the street to complete that street.
Yeah, because that's, that's not true all the way back now, I don't think.
No, it's a half-street, the north half.
Yeah.
The north half of Bass is concrete, and the south half is not.
What is the intention for the, is?
Possibly a financial institution.
Okay, so they were looking, I mean, Ken mentioned a bank, but there's no one yet that's solidified on that.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's accurate.
Well, we have a representative for the development, if you would like to talk to him a little bit.
Okay, I'd like to talk to him.
Ethan Slavin with JAA Trillity.
Okay.
I mean, we do have the property under contract, pending approval. It is a financial institution at that, as much as I can say is.
Right, well, that answers my question. I don't, you, we don't need any names or anything, but I'd like to know what kind of use that property is going to be put to, because as Ken indicated, you know, looking there, you also want to know what winds up back behind it, or whether or not you're cutting somebody off.
Standard, standard bank facility, drive-through bank facility.
Other discussion? I'm sorry, you don't?
No, I just, thank you.
No, I think we've been provided plenty of information in advance that it was going to be a financial institution, and that's why we needed the rezoning. And I got to tell you, my, my only real concern is putting the cart before the horse. You know, we're separating a pad site, as, as it's been described, a pad site on a main thoroughfare prior to plans for development behind it. You know, again, out of ignorance, I, it seems to me that we're, we're operating in reverse.
I can't say from experience, that's not all that unusual. We did that exact same thing in Edmund, where we built all the out parcels.
Where would that have been?
Thirty-third and Broadway is an old Payless Cashways site. We built it on the border, on the corner, three other pad sites before we even broke ground on a two-story.
And who, who ended up being the primary there?
It's all small shop retail in the back. It's nothing major.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't have an anchor. I mean, we kind of hit this.
No disrespect, but that, that's exactly my concern for this limited commercial area that we have.
When this, in this specific location, we basically have the anchor here. Buy for List is our shopping center anchor. So you're not really, there's plenty of room in the old TGNY box to do anything and everything we want, as far as a major retailer, if they were to come. But we, this center's already, already anchored with the grocery store, which is, you know, standard, the best anchor you could have, so anything built behind this would be small shop stuff anyway. I mean, more than likely, we could do.
More than likely, but would that be the case if there weren't already something in front of it?
Regardless of what's in front of it, it would, you know, we have room, we have, we still have room without this parcel to do a big box if that were to come along.
Because there's quite a few, how many acres are there? There's, there's several acres there.
Yeah, we have roughly eighteen, but it's.
Yeah, there's, it goes around.
Part of it's still agriculture that goes in behind, you know, Turtle Creek.
Right.
But there's plenty of, plenty of room to, if Dix comes knocking, we'll have room for him.
Can you get them to come knocking, by the way?
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Any other discussion? You're the, you're the developer, sir, aren't you? I mean, you're satisfied that this is an excellent use of this property, and that's why you're asking?
Oh, yeah, we, we're, we're pretty hands-on commercial developers, and we've made it sure that this fits egress, ingress, you know, we tied it all through, we lined it up, you know, the depth and all that stuff, so we're, we're happy with how it's going to lay out and fit in.
I, that's what I was gonna say, this is the first time they've dirt, turned dirt in that place in a long time, so.
It's been there a long time, you know, the agriculture behind the other shopping center is the hard part of that, and then just, we have so much space available currently in the old TGNY, it wouldn't, we could never, never hardly justify building anything else.
Okay.
Until that gets built back up, and then, just like we did the little out parcel building, we got that thing a hundred percent leased four or five years ago, and then we built the little out parcel building where the donut store is and the Ace Cash. Kinda all deal-driven, we don't typically build where we've got empty space, so.
Right. Other discussion? You all right? Call the roll?
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Next item is five B, consider and approve the emergency clause of ordinance number one-two-eight-two.
Most do approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Next item is six, and that's consider and approve resolution number two thousand and twelve dash ten. A resolution authorizing the incurrence of indebtedness by the Yukon Municipal Authority issue, the authority issuing its two thousand and twelve revenue bond, the revenue note, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million dollars, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing said revenue note to be sold at a principal price less than par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title sixty Oklahoma Statute, section one-seventy-six, authorizing and approving a sale tax agreement providing security to the revenue note, designating the revenue note as qualifi- getting my line off my, didn't bring my glasses, revenue note has qualified tax exempt obligations under the IRS Revenue, Internal Revenue Code nineteen eighty-six, providing that the trust and interest shall be the subject to provisions of the revenue note ratification of lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract between the city and the authority, and agreeing that the terms of the lease shall extend to, shall extend to long as the revenue note remains unpaid and authorization of documents and procedures relating to the issuance of the revenue note. Do I have a motion?
Most do approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
I just got one quick question, Mike, is that one sentence? Did you do that?
It is.
Well done, I don't think you get it jammed anymore in there. Thank you, John.
And you're supposed to read it in one breath.
Well, I've had that laser vision and it's, they've just about run their course, I'm gonna have to get some glasses because the lines are running together, and I apologize. I'm no great reader to begin with, that's no secret, but even now, it's even worse, so, we have a second? Discussion, any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
The next item is seven, that's consider and approve ordinance number one-two-eight-one, and ordinance amending section two, one-thirty-seven B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by determining that certain obligations, including the Yukon Municipal Authority two thousand and tw- twelve revenue note in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million dollars, do not exceed the debt limitations, repealing all conflicting ordinance provisions and declaring an emergency. And this requires that the, uh, ordinance be read, and I'm gonna call on our city attorney to help me in that task.
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the Court of Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon is hereby amended, by amending the existing language of section two dash one-thirty-seven B, which new section two dash one-thirty-seven B is set out in its entirety below two whip. The following bonds and indebtednesses are conclusively determined to be within and not to exceed the limitations of section two dash one-thirty-seven A, or any debt limitations of the Code of Ordinances or the Charter of the city. And any conflicting provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the city are modified to the extent necessary to fully validate the following. One, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility Revenue System Revenue Bonds, series two thousand and five A, in the aggregate principal amount of three million eighty thousand dollars. Two, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, series two thousand and five B, in the aggregate principal amount of eleven million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Three, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue Bonds, series two thousand and seven, in the aggregate principal amount of seven million five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Four, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, series twenty-ten, in the aggregate principal amount of four million four hundred thirty thousand dollars. Five, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue Bonds, series twenty-eleven, in the aggregate principal amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars. Six, Yukon Municipal Authority two thousand and eleven Revenue Note, in the prin- in the aggregate principal amount of two million dollars. Seven, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue and Refunding Bonds, series twenty-twelve, in the aggregate principal amount of fifteen million dollars. And eight, Yukon Municipal Authority twenty-twelve Revenue Note, in the aggregate principal amount of two million dollars.
Discussion? I would-
We need a motion.
Motion, sorry, motion-
So moved.
Second.
Now, discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Next item is seven B, and that's consider approving the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is eight, and that's the city manager's report.
Uh, the first thing I'd like to, um, call your attention to is our August, um, sales tax report. Uh, another good month for us with sales tax increasing for, uh, above the same period last year by eight point two-six percent. And that brings our year-to-date, uh, growth, uh, in sales tax to seven point eight percent year-to-date. Uh, we're very, very pleased with that number. I would call your attention that most of our budget was built on a four to four-and-a-half percent, uh, sales tax increase. And if you'll look at the, uh, at the chart, uh, when you get your, uh, book, uh, about monthly reports, you will see that, first of all, the one month that we were down a little bit, uh, actually probably was from the late reporting of sales tax collections rather than sales tax going down. Our trend lines are following very, very nicely, uh, along the same lines as what we had in, uh, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, uh, budget year. Uh, we would anticipate, uh, therefore that we will, uh, at least through the first quarter, uh, we are looking very good. Bill, I'm glad you were here to hear the report. Uh, and I would anticipate that we will exceed our projections, uh, through the year, uh, that, that we have coming up, and very pleased about that. I'll also point out very quickly, uh, that on use tax, where we have been running, uh, our increases, uh, for each period, uh, so far this year have been, uh, fourteen point seven percent, one hundred point five percent, fifty-five point two-seven percent, and this month at seventeen point three-three percent, leaving our use tax increase year-to-date at forty-four point one-three percent. I was patient to point out that we do not budget this revenue number. It goes into the pooled cash fund as part of our reserves to be budgeted next year. Uh, I'll also point out that, um, um, last year, our use tax for the, uh, for the total year was up sixty-nine point one-four percent. And, um, that excludes a two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar reserve, uh, that we got a tax letter on last year. So, uh, that money is set to come out and be part of pooled cash, uh, sometime, uh, late, uh, two thousand and thirteen. And be available for budgeting for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget year. The other thing is that, uh, I wanted to report to you, uh, at the last meeting, you gave us authorization for a sixty thousand not to exceed for the emergency repair of a bridge one-eighth mile north of Wagner Road on Yukon Parkway. Uh, we did go back, uh, Arnold, um, uh, worked with our contractor, and, uh, we have begun that, uh, emergency repair, in fact, the, uh, three pipes, uh, are in place this evening. Uh, it did take, because of the width of the gap, it took three thirty-six-inch concrete pipes, uh, to go across there, and, uh, uh, they are twenty-eight feet long, allowing for someday a, uh, uh, a two, a two-lane road to go down through that area. We were able to accomplish this for approximately fifteen thousand dollars less than the, uh, building of a concrete structure. However, I would also point out that we didn't have to pay for any hydrology reports, Robbie, uh, for that area. And, uh, uh, so, uh, we, we feel, we feel good about what we have done and the money that we saved from the initial projections of a concrete bridge. Also, uh, about a month ago, you authorized, uh, funding for, um, restriping of two-and-a-half miles of streets within Yukon to be accomplished before we start Christmas in the park. And, uh, I am told that, uh, starting next Wednesday, uh, during the evenings, Arnold, I believe is, uh, that, starting next Wednesday and continuing Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday evenings, we will accomplish those two-and-a-half miles of striping, uh, and that project will be complete. Arnold, did I miss anything on that part of it? All right. Mayor, with that, I stand ready for questions.
Thank you, excellent report, any questions?
Uh, what is the anticipated completion of the bridge out on, uh, off of Wagner Road there? On the, off of Yukon Parkway, I guess I should say.
They basically got the pipes put in today, by the end of the week, they're gonna turn traffic back on temporarily. By the end of next week, the pavement will be down.
So you're talking about roughly a two-week window at this point? What are you doing right now, you just diverting it around in the ditch, or?
We built a temporary, temporary road around the bridge.
Okay, cause I haven't been out there and looked at it here this, uh, this week so far, so.
From what I'm told, that's called a shoe fly, I don't know what that means, but anyway, there's a, a road around the bridge.
Thank you very much, Arnold.
Other question? All right, the next item of business is number nine, new business, with no new business, we'll go to council discussion. As promised, Mr. Gerba.
Oh, wow, I wasn't even ready, you know, for a, for a healthy snack, anybody wants to talk to Rick Opitz.
No commercials, no commercials.
We wanna talk about more commercial development in, in the city of Yukon, I think it's an excellent place to start, thank you.
After wanting to go first, that's all?
That's it.
Mr. McCarron?
Have you considered, Rick, behind the, uh, the new area that we just set up of putting a store behind there now in the commercial development? Peanuts are pretty good. I did have a, a note that I got, uh, that, uh, we received here recently about not had anything like a big trash day in a while. Uh, you know, last time I think we did something like that was during the storms. Uh, and I don't know if that's something we are considering or not, I'd like to just put out a, a feeler with, uh, Bill, and, uh, see if, you know, in the future we can, Kirsten, you, you wanna comment?
Uh, with the changeover in our total sanitation services, uh, we did not have a full big trash day. Our plan is to, uh, hopefully by late spring to start offering at, at the very minimum quarterly big trash days throughout the entire, uh, city. Uh, not just at specified locations where we set roll-offs. Uh, but that's part of our sanitation services. Uh, I hope that we can get to that point. If revenues stay, uh, at the levels they are right now, I, I'm probably gonna recommend that we go ahead and get the appropriate pieces of equipment and, uh, move forward, because many, many, many citizens have expressed, uh, uh, a desire to have big trash day, uh, in Yukon. Uh, certainly, we'd wanna start out with a, with a mon- uh, a, a quarterly type pickup and expand it from there. Uh, first of all, if the need is there, and then, um, if we've got appropriate equipment to do it in a timely manner.
Well, I think that's probably something that's, uh, I'm really glad to hear about, and I think that move forward, cause I've had several people that, even beyond the, the email that I received on it. Once again, I'd like to just say thanks to the Head Start folks too, that are, uh, letting them know that they were here tonight, even though we're honoring them and everything else. I just wanna say that I appreciate those kinds of efforts in our educational system, though they try to get the kids up to speed, because too many kids show up without anywhere near enough, uh, stuff behind them. And, uh, beyond that, I'd like to say thanks to Rick for the peanuts as well, I think I did just start off. But, uh, you know, I'll, I'll probably enjoy those greatly, so, uh, that's it for me, Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. I too am a big fan of roasted peanuts, you know, if you can't get a new truck, I guess peanuts will suffice. No, but I think that's very generous, and I, I appreciate that also. Um, I also wanna mention that I, I was able to be part of a, uh, retirement ceremony for one of our, uh, library employees, uh, Ms. Bradley, at, at the library after thirty-one years. Thirty-one years of dedicated service to our city, and, uh, if you haven't met her, I'm sure you will still find her, uh, many days at the, uh, library. Uh, she is just as sweet as the day is long, and she, when she gives you a hug, you feel hugged. So I'm very thankful to have been a part of it. Um, I'm also proud of our, uh, our city and the way they have managed our, uh, funds on a, a day-to-day basis. The, uh, sales tax, I know they, they don't have a lot of direct involvement in how much we have come in, but how they're managing that money makes me very proud, and, uh, I'm glad to be a part of it here on this council. Trash days, as, uh, uh, Mike had mentioned, is, uh, I think something that's gonna be very important to our ne- our new trash system, and, uh, I know that, uh, Bill, being the, the, uh, quality man that he is, and, uh, Grayson, uh, being able to oversee that, uh, that's gonna work out very well for all of us, I know that you guys are gonna do the best for the citizens of Yukon. Lastly and briefly, I wanted to, uh, bring up, which I know is very near and dear to Mike's heart, the, uh, feral cat situation that we have in, uh, Yukon. And, uh, we were provided with some information from a, uh, a respected citizen this week, which, uh, I wanted to share just some of the thoughts on, uh, what he had sent to us. Uh, bear with me, please, but it says, uh, for example, uh, both sides cite scientific studies, both claim humane motivations. People for the ethical treatment of animals, PETA, which some of us, I know, have a different analogy for, for PETA, but this is for the benefit of animals, says the Humane Society, which uses the term community cats, supports it, and has TNR instructions on its website. Uh, Philadelphia is among the major cities, uh, cities, cities practicing TNR. Sue Crosby, executive director of the city's animal care control team, says that most Philly cats, uh, feral cats are, uh, living and eating well, fed by humans or adept at dumpster diving. Linda Chervaski, a wildlife rehabilitator in Voorhees, New Jersey, argues that most ecologists and conservat- conserv- conservationalists, there you go, oppose TNR. Uh, cats, they are not native, and they kill not just to eat, they kill for sport. Smithsonian scientist, uh, Mara says feral cats are a major threat to birds, responsible for the extension, extinction of thirty or thirty-five island bird species. The Interior Department's two thousand and nine State of the Birds Report, uh, concludes that domestic and feral cats annually kill hundreds of millions of birds. One reason why a third, I want you to hear this, a third of the eight hundred bird species in the USA are endangered, threatened, or in significant decline. Uh, feral cats have an active, uh, national and, uh, local protective networks, uh, some supported by grants from pet food companies, no conflict of interest there. Um, I detest the killing of cats and dogs or anything else, says George Fenwick, president of the American Bird Conservatory, but this is out of control. He says that people unwilling to euthanize cats are turning them loose with the idea that they will be cared for. But the facts are that a great, great majority are not. Teresa Shargan, PETA's animal care control specialist, says that it's mystifying that anybody would say that a painless, quick end is cruelty when the other option is a slow, and I'm quoting here, is a slow, lingering, painful, horrible deaths by cruelty from people, from attacks by dogs, or being hit by a car, or dying slowly of disease, or gangrene in a ditch somewhere. Uh, there is a reason why shelters use euthanasia, and it's not to prevent suffering, which, uh, is what happens when they are homeless or living outside when nobody is taking care of them. The opposing TNR go, uh, got boost from two recent studies, uh, one concluding that the, that even the house cats let outdoors were prolific killers. Let me repeat that. Even house cats that are let outdoors are prolific killers, and the other calling feral cats a, a public health threat and more likely than dogs to carry rabies. Okay, so my concern is, with the discussions that are going on, um, there are many cat lovers, and I, I respect that, that there are many cat lovers, but the reality is this. To invest city monies, whether it be, uh, for support of this TNR program, or to take time out of our, um, animal control officer's day to be able to, to manage or monitor, uh, feral cats, I think is, um, I, I just don't think it's, uh, money well-spent for the city of Yukon, I think there are better ways to do it. I think that this TNR program, although there are many proponents to it, and they are good at selling their ideas, when you listen to these, uh, national authorities and what their thoughts on the, uh, subject are, forgive me for saying that, I just don't know that trying to save feral cats is in the best interest of the city. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Opitz?
Uh, yes, I wanna bring up a few city employees. Bill, Arnold, I'm gonna tell you something, and I'm gonna encourage the council to go down by and look at the sanitation department. Go look at cleaning up around the water towers. It's amazing what our city's looking like in just a few short months. I am very excited to say that we have some great city employees that are cleaning up and doing something and making me even prouder of this city than I already am. And I'm real excited about it, good job, guys. And, uh, if you get a chance, drive around, take a look. And, um, don't forget, everybody, shop Yukon. All right?
It's like a day without sunshine.
Grayson, I've got a couple of questions, the light, lights in front of Walmart, them being synchronized, what's the status of that program?
The, um, the lights have been, uh, studied, there are repairs underway. There was a communications problem, uh, that didn't allow one light to communicate all the way through. It would skip certain lights and go to the next light. Uh, uh, but that turned out, as we suspected, to be, uh, really not very consequential. The increased traffic has proven to be a, a major issue there. However, we, uh, we have, uh, requested a quote for, uh, replacement of certain parts of the control boxes to allow for better communications on those. Uh, we are also, uh, I told Arnold, as, as- I told Arnold as, as, as well as Robbie and, and others in the traffic, uh, group, that because there has been so much focus on the lighting on Main Street as well as Garth Brooks, uh, while we have studied it, we know what the fixes are, and we will be about the task of moving forward on those as well as maintaining them after they are fixed. Uh, I wanted to do something, uh, that made a statement to the public that these have been addressed and fixed. Not that they're gonna, it, you know, it doesn't stay perfect all the time, but, uh, I can anticipate, uh, that when the repairs are made and that we're moving forward, you're gonna see our street lamps, our, our signal lights turned in a horizontal position on the crossmember. Uh, you can see, um, how that looks if you'll go downtown Oklahoma City and, and see that it does provide for a lower-profile light. Um, I think a much improved look of the light, uh, over the normal, uh, vertical lights that we're used to seeing. Additionally, I think that we're probably gonna be looking at some, uh, yellow flashing arrows. Uh, Robbie, uh, I think that you went and experienced some of those and found them to be very beneficial in your travel.
Correct.
So, um, I'm, I'm excited about that. We're gonna, we're gonna be moving forward on that.
So is there a, do you have a schedule?
Well, my schedule and, and what we're able to put together may be two different schedules. I wanna have them completely redone and everything in operation before the Christmas shopping season begins.
Okay, that was, that was my hope. What about the street sweeper? I agree with Rick. Things are looking good, and I, I've seen the street sweeper a couple of times, but it's, it's running. We haven't had any problems?
No problems.
Operate, okay.
Four days a week, lots of, lots of miles of streets to get picked up when you're doing fourteen cubic, how, what is it, Arnold?
Fourteen cubic yards of material a day.
Fourteen cubic yards a day. That's a lot of material.
And then the trash trucks? We, we started to distribute the trash cans. I had a conversation with one of our, the citizen, so that's, that, they're in the process of being distributed. What date, what date is Halloween? I had a question.
It is on Halloween.
Okay.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I mean, but what is the official-
I think Christmas is gonna be on December twenty-fifth, too.
Uh, you guys are way sharp. Sometimes we have, when are the kids supposed to trick-or-treat? That was the question. So, you're not making fun of me, you're just making fun of the, the person that asked. Although I sm- I feel small now. They, uh, I'm sure they felt equally as humiliating.
We are gonna, we are gonna trick-or-treat on Halloween.
Okay. So watch out for the little trick-or-treaters.
That's on Wednesday night only.
But any of these people, go ahead and take your best shot. Uh, a couple of other things. It, it's cool. People have been running and exercising. I'm always happy to see that. There are two upcoming, uh, races here in Yukon. On November the third, Central Elementary for their fundraiser this year has asked that people come and run. And that's, rather than to sell you candy or a trinket or something, they're encouraging people, which I really support, to get out and be involved in the community, support the school, and come and exercise. So there's an opportunity to run. And then I'm happy to report, I believe that Chief Corn and our fire chief are putting together a team to compete against one another at the Chill Your Cheeks. So maybe the city, Mitch, I know you like to run and exercise. I've seen you do it. Uh, maybe the city staff will get together a, a team to compete. Mr. Deckard, I know he was a great athlete, all-state athlete, I think, in high school. He'll probably, oh, you had hip surgery. That's right. Sorry. But we need, it's time to get out and move. Thank you all for being involved, um, get involved with Chill Your Cheeks, and, uh, that's all I have. Anything else from anyone?
I've got, uh, I'd like to respond back to Ken.
Oh, no, we're not going on, no.
You don't wanna go on the feral animal deal?
No, we're not. No, this is discussion, not our-
Not debate.
We'll get, when you bring your ordinance, we'll have a chance.
Well, that's, that's all I was gonna say, is it's that, you know, I, I'd just encourage him when we get down to it, the final form and everything else, to read the ordinance as it's currently constructed. And I think a lot more porch lights are gonna come on, and, and that's all I was-
We know you've worked real hard and look forward to getting that. So nothing, oh, then at this time, then we are going to move to item eleven. That's consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council reconvene into executive session, uh, to discuss pending litigation as provided by OS two thousand and three, section three oh seven-B four. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Most do approve.
About a second.
Second.
Discussion, discussion. Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
And we would like to invite the city manager, Grayson Bottom, to attend, please. At this time, we will take up with the item number twelve. That's to consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, discussion. Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I would now like to state, I would like to state the minutes of the executive session. While the city council was in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. With no other business before the council, at this time, we stand adjourn.